Call to order the meeting of the, actually it's a special meeting for Budget Workshop on January 25th, 2018. I'll call for a roll call first.
Chairman Queerfeld.
Here.
Vice Chair Papahoser. Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Janet Bosomel. Carolyn Candelora.
Here.
Vincent Mace. Marcy Nafrio.
Here.
Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then we will turn it over to Mr. Winnicki.
Okay, before we get started, just a quick introduction. We are going to have a PowerPoint this evening. Members of the community are here, as well as our board members and our administrative team. If there's any questions that arise during the evening or after you leave tonight, feel free to send us emails to Don Winnicki or to my office. You have the scheduled date for our next meeting and...
It's okay. You missed the pledge of allegiance.
So this is the opportunity to ask questions. If there's any specific questions, the administrative team is here. Feel free to ask. That being said...
Do you want us to stop like then and ask or wait till the end?
No, you can, can we, Janet, can you move that chair just so people can see over the top of the line? Perfect. As we go along. Board members, can you see okay from that angle?
Do you want me to kill the lights?
We will, but are you going to be able to see that closer? Do you want to move? Slide down.
Move around.
Just move the chairs.
I don't want to miss anything.
Okay, so...
Is this one?
So that being said, the first numbers that Don will speak to will be our status quo, which we explained, moving the district forward with our current staffing levels. The second one will be my recommended budget, which aligns with our strategic plan. All of you have copies of the strategic plan. If there's any questions that you have of where this fits in with the strategic plan for new personnel or any programmatic changes, feel free to ask and our administrators and I will answer questions as you have. Tracy's also here if you have any more in-depth questions. Okay? That being said, Don, take it away.
Okay. So Scott alluded to the status quo budget reporting an increase of 3.5% over the current budget and the superintendent's budget request is 4.48%.
So Don, just, and I'm going to keep jumping in on with you. So new board members, when we're saying a 3.85%, one percentage point, Don, equates to just over $300,000.
Right.
So $310,000. So when you look at 3.85, it's just over $1 million from this current year's budget for us to remain status quo with all staffing levels for certified, non-certified. Okay?
I just realized this was an auto advance, so I got it. And so the major contributions are 2.43% for salaries, 1.18% for benefits, .37% for special education tuition, and .33% for utilities. And all the rest of it up, it comes out in less than two tenths of a percent.
The biggest change this year, if you've seen this in the past, is the utility issue that is not listed, but Don, if you were explaining electricity, it is spiked.
Well, that's later in the, we'll get to that when we go through the detail. So this is our current budget, just shy of $31 million. The status quo adds 1.193 for the 3.85. The superintendent's request adds 195 to the status quo or a total of 1.39 to the total. So that's an increase of .63 over the status quo and a total of 4.48. So certified salaries, a lot of that, of course, is due to the teachers' contract, moving everyone forward.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
So of that, how much, or you may not know, but how much is due to step movement, which is often...
It's actually, essentially, all due to step movement. There was no general wage increase and there was no increase. The ironic thing about this contract was in the current year, 1718, the veteran teachers did better because more money was added. There was no step movement, but more money was added to the top step. In year two and three, there was nothing added to the top step. So all of the wage increases generated through step movement, but it's over $400,000.
And there was nothing added to increase steps in between either, again?
Correct.
Okay. So just step movement, no general wage increase there?
Right.
Thank you.
And so the total increase for certified staff is just over half a million dollars. This includes board funding for all certified staff except for two. We pay for one teacher using Title II funds and one preschool teacher using Smart Start grant funds. Contractual and estimated increases for non-certified staff, which is basically everyone else, as well as one new paraprofessional and four upgraded paraprofessional positions, add .81% for a total increase of $252,000. Health insurance, this one frankly was a little disappointing. Now, I also want to say that this will likely change as we move forward. This is the first pass renewal. About .85% of the one comes from the base increase, but it would be worse than that. What has happened is we've seen when the teachers' union went from the PPO to the high deductible plan, we saw some movement to the buyout. And that has been included as a cost reduction in this. And I've also anticipated some plan design changes, and that would be for non-certified staff. And then there's also an increase of .16% for new positions. So the total increase is over $300,000, and as I said, it would be worse had we not had the additional teacher buyouts and plan design changes for the non-certified staff.
So that equates to about a percentage point, Don.
Yeah. So as I mentioned before, non-certified salaries are based on actual costs. We're available, anticipated settlements for ASME contracts and assumptions for expiring paraprofessional contract and unaffiliated staff members. Our PARAs contract expires on June 30th of 2018, so I made some assumptions in terms of, you know, what 1819 would look like after that contract was negotiated. I have not included any Title I funding, and that actually puts about $48,000 back into the budget, which is one of the reasons that non-certified staffing number is a bit higher. We continue to have more dependence on a variety of software applications. There are a number of them that are educational. iReady is one of the big ones. We also have, of course, Power School and a lot of other sort of behind-the-scenes applications. These things are now all coming off warranty or coming off the initial purchase, and so that's a fairly significant cost as we move forward.
And that's on top of, I think, what is it, about $240,000 that you have for technology that gets mortgaged out?
No, that, this has nothing to do with that. This is, yeah, yeah, the tech lease is really confined, and, you know, part of that is because it's the bank's rules, is confined to really hardware.
So this is...
So this is other than that.
Above and below.
Yeah, the increase in the tech lease was 70, I think, Bruce, or the annual, actually there's no increase this year. The contribution is 70. We're now, it's a steady state where we're putting in $70,000 a year, and it's a four-year lease, and so what's happening is Bruce is able to purchase $270,000 of equipment for that $70,000 because it's lease money that's rolling forward. It had a fairly significant impact on the budget when we first entered into this program because we had to, you know, year one, year two, each year of the first four years, we had to add $70,000 to the budget to, basically, to get it up to steady state. And this is what Scott alluded to earlier. I've had a, you know, based on our historical usage, and of course, you know, this is always subject to change, I've increased our usage by about 7%, but also we're running much higher on a per kilowatt hour cost, and so I've had to increase that over 13%. So the combination of those two factors has led to that $110,000 increase, which then, you know, equates to about a third of a percent of the, a third of a percentage point increase in the total budget.
I have a quick question for this building. Is the bill split between Park and Rec in us or do we just pay?
We've been paying it.
So, okay. No, not to be...
You know, it's sort of a...
It's going to be argumentative.
Yeah.
It's including a little bit more than just our...
Yes, it is, but I mean, it's not, it's not significant...
Right.
Because of the size of this building. If we were talking about NBIS, we might want to have that conversation.
My question was, projected 13.4% increase, is that for, what do we have, UI on that end? Because Wallenford's on this end, right? Did that go up as high?
No, that, well, you know what? I'll have to double-check that for you. I'm not sure how, what the, that 13.4 is blended between the two sides, so I'll break it out for the next time.
And then one more...
Don, that's higher than we'd see for increasing kilowatt hour, right?
Yeah, it's gone up fairly dramatically.
And we pay the entire bill, and I know it's UI down at the auditorium, we always pay the entire bill for the auditorium, right? Because like when we run it out and dance recitals come in and they crank the air because it's warm in there, we eat that, right?
Yeah, we pay, we pay for that. We would have had an increase of about $80,000 between the transportation contract and the increase in diesel fuel, plus we have another, about $10,000 in summer, special ed summer transportation, and a part of that is also made up of a smaller increase in the, in the rates for the Van Aids. But we've also had a $51,000, we've taken a $51,000 reduction, and we've told DACO that we're going to have one less Type 1 vehicle next year. And we've also made a $30,000 adjustment in the school day costs. These are the bridges and life skills, community transportation, which is now part of the base contract.
Can you just explain to the board, type 1 size vehicle, what that means?
The big ones.
Big bus.
The big yellow buses, not the little ones. Outside placements are up about $115,000. These are budgeted at full cost, so there is no reduction for the excess cost grant payments, which is the same situation that we had this year.
How is that working out this year or is it too soon to tell?
Well, this year, I think we're probably in fairly reasonable shape. Suzanne, is that accurate or in terms of versus the budget, I think?
Well, we had some recent replacements.
Right. So the costs, we were, we were pretty much okay for the first four or five months, and now we're seeing an increase. I also do carry some unanticipated placement money in the budget because, as you know...
We did have, we did have three, three new placements.
Did you administer down at the beginning of the school year, were already placed at administer placements, and so we needed to absorb that, and then we've had three additional placements since then?
Now, they're not attending our Brentford schools, getting our services here as...
Right. So special education placement.
Correct.
And you really have no choice when children move in and they're already outplaced and stuff like...
We assume the financial responsibility.
So you have to... Thank you.
And then enrollment, projecting a decrease of 43 students. It would actually be more than that, except we have included a second regular ed preschool classroom. So that's down at the bottom there, where you see it going from 29 to 44. For the most part, for grades K through 8, I'm simply moving the current class forward one year. For the high school, I do include some historical factors in their enrollment, and of course, the biggest loss tends to be at the 8, 9 level. So you can see this year, we have an eighth grade of 140, and based on, based on our experience, I'm projecting a ninth grade next year of 117. So that loss of 23 makes up the lion's share of the, of the change.
Is the special programs then the preschool?
Pride.
What do you call it?
Yeah, Pride, and currently it's Pride and one preschool. Next year, it's budgeted for Pride and two preschool.
All right, good, because I, when I looked at it first, I thought it was something special ed, and I'm like, how did we just jump from this to this?
No, so if you break it 15, 14, and then if you do add a second section, a section of 15 more, we'd get to 44.
I suppose, and, you know, one of the things that, that can always happen in this kind of thing is that we, you know, I get, I sort of use the model that I used before, and maybe what I should do now is actually bring that pre-K up to the top before kindergarten, so it breaks up to...
I still got it was 18 to 21 year olds or something, you know? Yes, they all...
Okay, so staffing requests. The superintendent's budget requests two 612 instructional coaches, one for English Language Arts and one for math. And then this justification for instructional coaches was in your book, but obviously Tracy is here and ready and willing to answer any questions you might have about...
Do you want to go through it and come back to it, or do you want to question as we go? Because there's...
I think, I think questions a lot of people should ask when they're thinking about that.
Okay, so with the narrative up here, obviously we have the two coaches in place right now. We're looking to grow and have the continuum through 12th grade with those two additions of instructional coaches. Tracy, if you want to, now that you spoke to this in your pre-meetings, but this might be time to...
We did just have a presentation in my subcommittee meeting by Marissa Levine and Megan Peterson, showing what our coaches do now. I know we haven't even met the board members since then, actually two, I believe, so happy to distribute that, it's on our website as well. It talks about what those coaches do for us. The model really would be that both up to 612. Those coaches, math, or it's actually numeracy and literacy would not only be for mathematics and literacy or our language arts classes, they're also integrationists, where they take that work in order to social studies and science classes and Ally Hart's classrooms and everything, just to make sure that everyone is really helping implement the common core state standards for literacy and numeracy, as well as supporting NGSS, which would be Next Generation Science Standards, the C3 framework, which is the state's new adopted social studies framework, and any additional changes. We were, there were, well, in the last two weeks, sets of five administrators each time have gone to an NGSS workshop, and today and yesterday, we were at an instructional rounds workshop. And both of these mention the use of coaches to implement PD, and it is the model that the state suggests for us as well, and it, in the long run, we've seen it with our A5, really reduced the cost of professional development for the district.
And the one, the advantage of having the intermediate school and the high school on the same campus, you know, we've talked about commonalities between the two schedules and our ability as we move forward to align so that we can share not only teaching staff, but having the instructional coaches, the model in place, they're able to get back and forth between the two buildings quite easily right now. I know that Ms. Peterson's here and she's driving across town between our two elementary schools, which many coaches do, but you could lose quite a bit of travel time, you know, in the course of a day, going back and forth. It's nice to have that ability on one campus to share staff.
How are your class sizes? Is there any way you could trade a classroom teacher position for a coach position?
We're going to, we're going to get to that as we move through...
Class sizes?
Yeah, we'll speak to class sizes. Any questions, any further questions, whether before we put the instructional coaches piece, you have that narrative in your mind, but do any other board members?
Okay, so then also request to add a preschool teacher and a preschool paraprofessional. Now, there is, of course, the possibility that the preschool teacher would come from a grant, but we don't know that.
I have a question, Tony, you may not have the answer to it because it's all new, but in the new legislative action, they're allowing budgets to be adjusted according to the number of students that enrollment has declined. Do they count preschool students towards that calculation or do they not?
Don't know, but we can find out.
We don't need to know the point, but it's something I think we should go as we build the budget.
Sure, it's a good point, yeah. Right, because you're looking at if it is 15 for increase in preschool versus a decline in 43.
Right, and, and, yeah, do they count towards...
Or actual K-12?
Right.
Total enrollment. Do you know Tracy about, and did, did they count that this year towards 100?
I do not believe they counted this year. Students do have SATs, SAT numbers, so, and that's different than what we did with FRC, so I'm not sure because of that difference.
But in terms, in terms of the funding formula is changing.
Yeah, that's what...
And I think that's what Sarah was alluding to, the fact that it's, it's next year going to be more dependent on your actual, it's kind of goes, it's going back to where it was 15 or 20 years ago, where there was more of a basis in, it was more enrollment-driven.
Right.
And, and they're moving back in that direction again.
And it could have ramifications for us, but I think that's why it's good for us to...
Yep, absolutely. And again, you, this, this was in your, your book, but in terms of justification for the additional preschool classroom, anybody has any thoughts or questions?
This is different than our Pride program, where we pair up identified and unidentified students. We still have the two classrooms here of FRC with three and four-year-olds within full capacity here, but we're running full day right now.
I mean, I think in an ideal world, we want all those three, four-year-olds to come to school. I just don't know if we're going to be able to do that now, but ideally, it's a wonderful goal to strive for. I think the sooner we get all the people, the better off.
Well, the one advantage to this as well is, you know, because we have the, I'll refer to it as the annex for Jerome Harrison, that's where the one classroom is this year. The other side of the building is currently used by FRC, but so we do have a second classroom adjacent to the current classroom that could be used. Once we got beyond two, space might be more of an issue.
The, the current two that we have right now are 24 capacity with bathroom facilities on both sides, and we are putting the connecting overhead tunnel to meet the requirements for the school ready grant, so that gives us quite a bit of flexibility. I sent you an email today regarding one of the classrooms that had water damage, and we're able to move over to another existing classroom, so we potentially have two if we do grow to that point in the future where all of our fours are shifting down to that end of town, we put out the building capacity there. So you're adding, that would add another 30 students over the course of two years if we were to project out. So, thank you.
I put these on the same slide, but again, you've seen this before, this is the justification for the Jerome library.
Any comments on the...
I just appreciate it being, being put in, you know how passionate I am about early literacy and having a librarian for our H1 students. It's important.
And the next piece, the high school communication is a point, Don, if you want. This is for an existing position that we have with a part-time person. We consistently have a waiting list for this program. It's been very popular, and we've done quite a bit with it. You've seen some of the after products on display when we've done presentations, and it, it really is a real positive opportunity for our students, so we were looking for a slight increase of .2... Four, four ones, but I don't want to get into breakdown of what it means and how often it means, but that could get a part-time person who is receiving benefits, additional teaching time for our students at the high school.
Yeah, so there's no additional cost for health benefits for this increase. It's only the prorata salary increase. And this is one of the things that Sarah had alluded to before, we're actually proposing the elimination of one classroom position at NBIS. What I've basically done is I've made that and the preschool classroom budget neutral. Not that it would be an NBIS teacher going to the preschool, but through some sort of domino assignments of the teachers, that we would actually fill that position in that way. So we wouldn't have to hire an additional teacher, we would actually effectively take one from NBIS.
So priority-wise, then, the administrators would choose the primary teacher over...
Well, I mean, actually, the, the same argument works with any of the, any of the new positions.
Okay. Okay, so it is, it isn't necessarily set in stone?
Right, right, correct.
Thank you.
Eliminating one music position at TVES.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
We have a retirement at Jerome Harrison, and we have two music teachers at the high school, two music teachers at NBIS, and two music teachers at TVES. And so the thought was that we could move one of the TVES positions to Jerome.
But doesn't one do vocal, one does instrumental?
Instrumental, so what we would look to do is be able to schedule and continue with the instrumental piece, and when that person is not doing the instrumental, we would pick up the other piece.
The voice?
The voice. So we've, we've had conversations with, with Dr. Welch on what that would look like, and then he was comfortable that we would be able to service two classrooms, the fourth and fifth grade, for the instrumental piece. After those two sections, the rest would be circulated through for the other students.
So Mr. Carter's not teaching both the music?
You have to, you have to sing or dance.
You don't want, you don't want Carter to teach... You don't want Carter teaching music or me teaching cooking, right? This is a reduction, proposed reduction of point four in 612 world language, and I've, I've intentionally done it that way because it wouldn't, there would be a shift of some high school world language to NBIS in order to support eighth grade Spanish.
So it's still all have Spanish?
Yes, so we're looking at sizes for high school existing classes in world language in the reduction with some of these classes going up in Spanish size-wise, but still being able to effectively meet their needs and sliding those sections over to the middle school so that, as we had mentioned before, upwards of 85% or higher would be able to take a full year of Spanish.
Okay, and then sixth and seventh grade would continue to...
Continue with their exploration and what they're doing.
Continuing.
And we're, as we mentioned before, we're working on aligning those schedules so that the current, not current, next year's eighth grade and freshman class, we'd be able to align so that teachers would be available at the same times every day so that we, you know, meet those, those obligations with their schedules.
This is actually the half-year additional section of health that you recently acted on, and next year's schedule, we're, we're able to do without that. And then we have finally an upgrade of four paraprofessional positions to specialists as behavior technicians. This was actually not in your book, and so I don't know, Suzanne, if you wanna take a moment to speak to it?
Sure. A registered behavior technician is a paraprofessional who works under the supervision of a board-certified behavior analyst. And the reason that I've requested a change in position from a paraprofessional to a registered behavior tech is that the increases in inappropriate behavior such as noncompliance or aggression disrupting classrooms is really the leading cause of our students who are outplaced to private special education placements. We've made significant progress in decreasing the number of replacements through the expansion of the Bridges program, which we now have from Jerome Harrison through the high school, and we serving, this year we're serving 30 students in that program. So we've made great progress in that area, and yet there are still some students whose behavior continues to be disruptive in the setting. And so the thought was to increase the capacity of our current staff to provide additional layers of support in, in, I would assign one registered behavior tech in each building. We do currently contract for a VCPA services from ACES, and that person would be able to provide some training and would be able to provide the supervision. This budget request includes additional money for the training and supervision hours. The behavior techs receive 40 hours of training. Some of that can be done for the four folks together in a small group, and then some of it must be done individually, really in a coaching model to make sure that the person is demonstrating the skills in real-life situations under the supervision of the VCPA. In addition, our paraprofessional contract has a provision that for paraprofessionals who receive specialized instruction or certification, that they're eligible to move to the specialist category. And so this request also includes money that would be an ongoing cost for those folks to change in their salary, their hourly rate, to move from the paraprofessional rate where they are now to the specialist category.
I do want to just, just say, I guess I wanna highlight the fact that though this will cost us a little money here, it can save a lot of money for the district, but more importantly, it saves children's lives by keeping them in their home school as opposed to outplacing them, because once they're outplaced, it's very difficult to bring them back. And sometimes little children, who are only five or six or seven years old, have behaviors that are so out of control that it necessitates an outplacement. And, and you're looking at a little child then being outplaced for their entire career. So I think it's, it's money lost, that.
Did any of these programs bring the family into, you know, training or, I guess, into the plan? Just any behaviors that are demonstrated at school often have to be reinforced at home so that there's continuity of care, otherwise there's gonna be contradictory messages and the child's not gonna advance. So how do you bring the parents in to this or the family support system to make sure that this program does succeed? Because yes, kids are here for a good portion of their day, but when they go home, if the parents or the caregivers at home aren't doing the same thing at school to stop these behaviors, we are gonna make limited progress.
That's a really good point. We do make a concerted effort to involve parents in the process, particularly the parents of students who are in the Bridges program. That's usually done through our mental health staff, and we use VCPAs as a support. And there are times when we have, when we include the VCPA support for a variety of consultations with the family. Sometimes we use them to establish a routine at home in terms of what their behaviors are expected to set up a program, what their expectations are at home, and then generally the mental health staff, either social workers or school psychologists, are really the link to the parents in terms of getting them to, to try to be consistent with that.
And the, the mindset and thought process of increasing these four positions versus additional cost for consultation services, just upping the hours, we, we wanna take preventive measures to have the person that's trained in every building and to offset, and it's, it's really a break-even point with having these four additional people trained versus increasing our consultation costs.
Because one of the things that we find is that our, our behavior analyst does develop a variety of behavior intervention programs for students to use at school. And while we work very hard to be consistent, that consistency requires sometimes some additional training and support to make sure that we are implementing that plan with fidelity. So my thought is that if we provide a greater level of support and training to these individuals who are really in the trenches, so to speak, working with students day by day, that their programs will be more consistent during the day, more than a consultant could provide. And you're, by coaching that behavior tech throughout the period of time, we're going to increase their ability to be more consistent in the school day, and therefore kids would be more successful. And I also find that when you're, when you're more successful with one student, that often runs off on the other students, and certainly our staff interact with a variety of kids. So even though a behavior tech might spend the majority of their day working with one student, in many of our Bridges programs, there are multiple students in the Bridges classroom or in the general education classroom at the same time, and that individual will be utilizing their skills to support a lot of kids.
Do you have high... The line item, sorry, the line item we had at thought was like 48,000, over 48,000 for this, for the training? Is that just for the training or do you spend when they become...
That's actually the salary increase. I didn't, I didn't break it out, and when Suzanne gave me the breakdown, it came out to about the same thing. So it's actually all reflected in salary at this point. In truth, it probably should be 40 and eight of, you know, 40 of salary and eight of training or somewhere in that.
All right, so there's, oh, that 48, some of it's training, the rest is salary. When they go up to specialist, the pay increase, do they end up, is that part of the, like, health? Health benefits, do they get more?
No, there's no, no. Health benefits are entirely based on years of service.
So looking at it per individual, Don, the cap on that special rate when they do go, the increase in hourly from what they're currently at to that maximum level for paras, what?
Right now, it's 2238 per hour for a specialist.
Right.
And we average around $15 an hour.
So you're looking at about a $7 an hour raise for these four, for these four people. It does not have an impact on the, the health benefits, but it's about $7 per hour more per four.
Now, the working day is full day or...
Physical day, yes.
Okay.
What's the turnover in these positions?
Well, we're very lucky to have our paraprofessionals be very consistent, you know, certainly in considering folks who would be, that we would want to train for that position, and we wanna make sure that we have some of the commitment. But we are very lucky here in North Ramford to have a fair number of folks who are, are long-term paraprofessionals.
Long-term, do you mean three years, five years, seven years? Just a rough, I mean, you don't...
I know, seven to 10 years, I know a lot of folks who stay for, now, I would say that our pool of paraprofessionals is very mixed. We have those folks, many of them whom are certified teachers, who work as paraprofessionals for a couple of years, who get a job, so we do have some of those folks, and we really enjoy having the expertise of those folks, even if it's only for a couple of years. And then we have other folks who have been here for a long time, and they intend to stay in that kind of role.
It's kind of a bimodal distribution.
So would these four select, like, some kind of committee process, like, how do you fix these four?
Well, the position would be posted, like, all are paraprofessional positions, and then folks would, would demonstrate interest, and then we would have an intricate process and consider whose skills are maybe would be best suited for the role.
And I would also think that, you know, because of the salary, it's going to be more attractive for somebody to stay as opposed to what they may be making, you know, 13 to 15 dollars in a more traditional power role.
I have a question here. For the specialist, what exactly makes a parer become a specialist? What kind of education do you think?
There's, we don't have a real clear criteria. I think that the contract says if they receive special training or they have some sort of a certificate. Now, the folks who have received that, that designation in the past have been, we had someone who was a royal transcriptionist, we have had a person who was an interpreter. Right now, we have our job coaches are in the specialist category, so it's been, you know, it's really specific depending on what our needs are.
And the contract actually allows the board to designate specialists. So as, sort of as part of this request, part and parcel of this budget request, would allow the board to designate those positions as specialists.
Well, now I have another question. Are we training from within or are we going out and hiring these?
Our plan would be to train from within, to post those positions and find the folks who are interested.
Okay.
If we didn't have adequate people, then we would have to consider something else in terms of posting, and then you might be able to hire some. You know, I would, I would assume and be interested in having folks who are currently doing this, which is paraprofessionals, who are really doing a great job, great interest in additional training, that they've demonstrated their level of skill, that they would be likely candidates for the position, and that they would appreciate having additional training in terms of doing their job.
Have you put feelers out?
I have not.
In anticipation that if this was...
I haven't. I know that our staff are often looking for additional training, but I wanted to make sure that we, we talk to this level first.
Now, with the training, would they end up needing to have like a bachelor's degree or...
No, they require 40 hours of training, and they have to pass two competency tests, and then be supervised by the VCPA, who determines that they've met the criteria in terms of demonstrating the expectations.
And then they also have to do something to maintain the certification.
There's an annual assessment that they have to go through, and they need to maintain a certain number of comprehensive supervision after that time. I've talked with the director of behavior services at ACES, who supervises our VCPA that we're contracted for, and he indicates that that ongoing supervision can be, continue to be included in the contract that we have, at least at our level. Right now, we contract for at least two and a half days a week of VCPA services, so maintaining that, we could provide the ongoing supervision.
This slide is obviously a lot of numbers, but I include it just so that you can go back and reference, and it includes the head, the requested head count for 19, the head count for 18, 17, and 2009, in case you wanna see what's happened over the last 10 years.
So just...
I was just gonna ask, so maybe the central office administrators would, the supervisor of buildings and grounds be under that, listed there then?
Yes.
Okay, and the food service director would be listed there, and the new accountant?
The new accountant is.
Is, is the food service person under the four?
Well, I, yeah, I think it, no, it's, it is in that same place.
Okay, so they...
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just verify, because he's actually paid out of food service, so...
Well, I was...
But, you know, I don't wanna be disingenuous because we've been putting money into food service, so...
Okay. And I don't need to know that first name.
Yeah, I'll just verify the...
Thank you.
My other, my other version of this has initials. And here, again, we've just, I've, I've included some of the things we've done over the last couple of years in terms of staffing, so you sort of can see that the eliminated and the reduced has far exceeded the added. The consequences of a budget reduction, as Scott mentioned earlier, a 1% decrease is about $310,000, which is in the neighborhood of the cost of, or that has the impact of reducing approximately six teachers. That doesn't mean there aren't other areas where we might be able to take reductions. And frankly, I'm hoping that we would get some reduction from the health line, because as I said, this is a preliminary renewal, and, you know, that dance tends to, to go on for a while and often comes down.
I think we're going to be in a very difficult budget season. The town is losing a million dollars in VCS funding, and I know that Councilwoman World Smanjolani told us it would be more difficult than the past year, so we haven't really had any easy...
Yeah, they haven't been easy so far, so...
Don, I wanna mention that there was a decrease that's not listed here, athletics, before we get off and go. In your original packet, there was an additional, I believe, five coaches in the athletic department, and the athletic directors at the middle and high school built it, they went on contractual language, and just looked at numbers of coaches, not taking into account that we did eliminate. So when we fine-tune that number, it's gonna reduce it by about $19,900, so that will come off of our bottom line, okay?
That reduction is not reflected in any of these numbers yet, so that would be a, that would be a cut that you could make.
Yeah, that was just by, by human error, that.
It's not a lot.
Yeah, but it's, it's important to mention.
These are some things that we've talked about in the past that didn't make it onto the list. As a matter of fact, it's pretty much the same list as you saw last year. So I don't know if there's any questions about these.
I do have a question, sort of, it's tangential, but under talented and gifted, I'm wondering if we're funding the program so that the teachers can still attend the conference?
We are.
Okay, go ahead. Because I think that's important.
Did you want to increase the subs last year? For DMS?
We, I think it was two years ago.
How's that looking for you?
Well, we still have, I mean, we're, we're still not among the top payers in the area, and so there are times, and, you know, the administrators could certainly speak to this, there are times when our, the number of subs we have is not really adequate. There are times when it's okay, and obviously, it, it's in part dependent on absenteeism among the regular staff.
And so what's the per day rate then for subs now?
75.
Okay. And I believe the technical schools pay over 100.
There's a lot of places that pay 100.
Yeah.
We pay, we pay our permanent or building subs 85.
So we have people, for those who don't, the permanent subs report every day, they're used as needed, or they're able to shift between buildings, but they're still, as permanent subs would be low, as the dominance of the technical school or some of our city schools, which I'm concerned.
Could you get, like, an estimate, like, if we went up even 20 members, what would, what it might cost based on...
The cost to, yeah, that I can certainly do. I'm not quite sure what the, it would be hard for me to estimate exactly what the impact of that would be, but I can certainly, I can give you the cost for a $10 increase.
Yeah, well, you kind of know how many subs...
How many we used last year?
Yeah, how many subs we've used in the last couple of years.
$10.
You know, like, if, if we went up 10 or 20, what would be the impact?
This is, I say, my opportunity to complain every year, but, and, and I say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, there, there really are a lot of things that we're... things that we're required to do now that we weren't required to do 15 years ago. And I start with the board policy subcommittee, because as many of you know, that, you know, there are statutory changes. Last year, before this year, that one of the law firms put out a 24-page summary of legislation affecting education. So, I mean, there just are a lot of things that we have to keep up with. Tracy mentioned before, in terms of PD, sort of changing the model to job-embedded professional development, where you're trying to use coaches and mentors. Students, obviously, we have to manage a lot of different programs, but, you know, that's our fundamental mission, so maybe that one is less, less belongs on this list. Training and record-keeping, again, there are a lot of things, a lot of training we have to do now, but we also have to keep records of all the training. That's actually done through Tracy's office. And so, again, these are all things that are, that impact what we do on a day-to-day basis. When you look down at the bottom, I mean, again, that's something that, you know, 15 years ago, I don't think any of those were on the list. Well, fire alarm and sprinkler inspections probably were. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there are a lot of obligations that we have, you know, just to open the doors. And then, this is the list of capital projects that I had included. As I said, really, this is just a working list. There are a number of these things that we don't have estimated. And in order to, you know, obviously, if we wanted to move any of them forward, we would have to try to get estimates for them. What I did in terms of last year is I eliminated the high school boilers, because fortunately, that project has been funded. And then anything that we didn't start on, I took my five-year plan and just sort of, you know, re-centered everything. So it comes out to $389,000 using this list. There are certainly some things here where we could do less. You know, when you look at things like unit heaters, that's doing 12 at the high school and 10 at Totucket Valley. You wouldn't necessarily have to do that many. So, you know, there is some, there is some flexibility in this.
And we did also talk about high school bathrooms. And we talked somewhat, though when I say we, I don't know how many of us were sitting here with us. We did talk about perhaps just doing two, so at least there were two decent bathrooms for the students to start. So maybe if we could get a per bathroom quote also, then we could...
I know we had discussions about entry point bathrooms, the women's room on the first floor, and then in the area where we, near the gymnasium, and then the price, if they had to be handicap accessible, what that would do to the...
Right, so I think we should probably get a price for what it would be and do it, do it right, with the handicap accessible and renovating it and see if, see that if, when we get the price, we think it's something we should move forward to, because, what was it, two years ago, we had the tour of the high school and we saw the condition of the women's bathroom and the men's bathroom and...
Yeah, so that's certainly something, well, I mean, we can't change since 67, so there are colors and...
Yeah, they're actually probably the same as they were in 72.
Right.
But in all honesty, the bathrooms aren't the only problem. You put money into, like...
You have to, you have to, well, I think, well, go ahead, Jan.
No, I was going to say, if you put money into bathrooms, like, are you just throwing money away?
Well, I have a good question. We do, we have, we've sort of hashed that out, too, because here's something I really think we need to, I think that's what the construction estimate for renovating is new, is I think we're going to get, we need to start getting a plan for renovating as new, because it needs to be redone. But in the meantime, we have to be cognizant that it takes years to get the plans, the funding, and get rolling with it. I think it took us long when we were building North Haven High School to do the referendums and get the plans and get everything, you know, the models and get everything, re-tube the state facilities, and as it did to build it, it was an 18-month construction timeline. So your kids that are freshmen now may well have graduated before the high school is renovated. So they should have got the bathrooms.
So will the two bathrooms be renovated when school is done? So you're listing 50 grand?
I don't think they would be.
You say, don't touch the bathrooms, work around the bathrooms.
No, they would, if I can just inter, if you look at over time with, conceptually to the whole process that Sarah just was referencing, you're talking years and acceptance and everything to go from, starting with our council and then the bonding process and everything. There's been changes.
So five to 10 years?
Five to 10 is realistically probably past the five mark. So if you look at two bathrooms at, let's use the number $100,000 each, I think realistically to, and if we got involved with the gutting process and it was just purchasing of, you know, sinks and things that we then could cut costs, if it's over seven years at $200,000, you're looking at about $28,000 per year per cost. You're probably not going to get reimbursed on that when they come in and do that renovation. In order to get our percentage back, they're going to, they're going to do everything.
But we could stop, because you know the footprint really isn't going to change because it didn't move on and all. You probably know which areas won't need as much renovation as others. And there may be bathrooms that could be renovated and left intact when the rest of it is renovated.
And I throw the number 100,000 per bathroom. When we went through and estimated that, we had put $128,000 into 11 bathrooms just to remove all fixtures.
Yeah.
Okay, so if, as I mentioned, if we can assist with the gutting of these bathrooms and the demolition of these bathrooms for just these two, we can significantly lower our cost. My point being is that, you know, crystal ball, how long is this going to take? If we're saying if it is 10 years long side, let's do, let's do the two bathrooms and roll with that. Over time, they're done, it'll be worth it.
How much time will it take going to renovate? Can we start looking at instead of, if you do like, that's the summer job.
It's not, this isn't a big, if we demo, similar to what we just did for our boilers, our guys can do it, you're, it's manual labor. And then we go in and present them with shit. They come in and just tile paint.
But didn't Town Council say, you know, if I remember incorrectly, that lose like 120?
There's about 128,000.
To do the bathroom?
Yeah, we need additional.
Remember we talked about doing, using that money?
I believe, and don't absolutely quote me on this, but I think what happened is I think that money was taken along with some other money and set aside for the NBIS roof.
They did.
Now, however, and here's the however, they didn't spend all of the money that was set aside. So there might be some money left that could be, that they could, we couldn't do it, but they could move back to the bathrooms. We also, I'll try to find, we actually bid this project once, and it came in at $430,000 and after we got up off the floor. And that's really what derailed it. And, but I, the bid has to be somewhere, and so at least that would give us a sense of the cost of, you know, doing the various bathrooms, although it would have to be adjusted for the change in construction cost between, it's probably five years ago that we did it.
So the other thing we might think about doing is doing something cosmetically, where you simply change all of the stalls so that they're a brightly colored stall, where you change, you know, just cosmetic things. It might just make it look a little more...
I think it depends how far gone it is, though. I mean, if the tiles on the floor are, like, you know, coming up, like, what is the stall? Who's stalls going to do it? Just going to make the floor...
Well, basically, the...
I haven't seen it, so maybe I'd like to go and see that.
They have to be, they all have to be.
They'd be, yeah.
And then they can come in and retrofit and do that. And that's happening everywhere now.
We should probably do another tour sometime.
Yeah, with new board members.
Or new board members.
Yeah, we can do that. But I think, my point would be, and what I would support is that, you know, looking forward, if it is going to be X amount of years and everyone is in agreement, which I think we all are, that we desperately need two bathrooms that kids are comfortable going in and using, that we should do it. We owe it to our students.
So do we need to just take, like, what, the main area that they frequently...
The first floor, first floor, we know.
You know what you want to do?
We know what you want to do. That the kids use, they travel by.
At all. They're most convenient locations.
So I completely preface this by being a newbie on the board and not reading the fundraising policy. No, I'm saying it on film, I did not read it. But are we allowed to do capital campaigns?
That we have to get...
If it's over $1,000, we wouldn't pay for it.
But I mean, I've seen towns do capital campaigns.
Yeah, to do and then done. And they do playgrounds that way.
Yeah, we did the playground over here.
We did the press box. Are you saying for, like, just like, like, say, like, do you do bathrooms? Do a capital campaign? Or, like, take one thing? We can do it for, yeah, that's what a capital campaign is for. You pick a high-priced item, you build your community, and everybody takes ownership in it, and you give what you can in it. Of course, I got a 10 times, at least in my experience, you get a big ticket on this donor who has had a fantastic experience in those disgusting bathrooms.
I'm not even...
I don't know.
So no fun to be saying that.
Everyone wonders where my dress is.
I wouldn't have our administrators leading it. I think we have to look at the, you know...
No, but I think...
Yeah, to source. You're going to have to...
But I think the good news is, is that we do have a little pot of money that was earmarked for that. And we can follow up with conversations about the money spent on the roof. And I sent an email today about a number of the things that are being in the roof documents. But if there, if there's still as much as in place for that, I think, what I'm hearing is we're all in agreement of two select bathrooms that get quite a bit of traffic for us to do in the immediate, the immediate need for now, moving forward.
Well, we can come back with some additional information on the 8th.
If I didn't get that read correctly, 11 bathrooms. So it's about 40,000 per bathroom. So if there's any of that, it would be 20 of them.
But these were, don't forget, some of these, a number of these bathrooms were staff bathrooms, single, single, I don't want to get into the specifics, but there were many small bathrooms. There's only one per floor for the, for the large stall bathroom. So a lot of it was...
Well, if I just divide it by 11, you get about 40,000.
Well, yeah.
You have to be able to do it. You have to move concrete walls, you have to...
If it's handicap accessible.
Handicap accessible back.
And don't you, when you're renovating, don't you have...
Yes, you have, yeah. Make a change.
They have to all be accessible.
Yes.
That's why I think, which drives the cost.
Yeah, so you absolutely have to change the entire entry into it and then have another wall and, you know.
Right.
Like, I can draw your picture, but I'll see, I got it.
All right, so we have homework to do.
Designing bathrooms.
Well, get any numbers.
And that's it.
Oh, I had to touch about the truck, too. You're putting in for a truck. And I thought we put in for a truck last year.
Yeah, we didn't do it.
In your report. All right, so we didn't do it, except...
Yeah, we didn't do it, no.
Okay, because I remember...
We still have, we still have the lovely blue pickup.
All right, so I'm like, well, I hope we got a truck last year.
What is the truck user?
But we didn't get a truck. What do we use the truck for, Jan?
We just for hauling a variety of things around the district. Sometimes, literally, things like risers, moving them from one building to another or...
Garbage pails.
Yeah.
When we work an event at the high school and 15 garbage pails are out there, the gentleman will drive the old pickup truck, load them in, drive them back. Equipment, building to building, the risers were mentioned. The truck that John Florio uses is the maintenance facility truck, and then he plows with that as well. He's got a hitcher for it.
That one, we recently had to put a new liftgate on.
Right.
For the year of the blue truck?
Oh, that's old.
It's probably pre-1990.
Yeah, it's low mileage, thing runs like a tank.
We don't have the 19, why is that the special?
It's better than a lot of the new stuff, believe me.
It probably should have been a budget subcommittee, but it isn't. It's a special meeting, so. All right, so I believe, unless there are any other comments from the board on decorating budget, I believe we'll move to public comments on the, which is limited to items listed on the agenda. But first, I want to make sure that we don't have any other questions before we go home and we study this and write our questions.
Not about the budget, but I did have two things. I didn't know if I could, if it was listed as a special.
It's a special meeting, so you cannot, unless they have to do with this. You can't even figure out how to connect them.
Was there something about the different dates for the budget questions?
We have one on February 8.
Someone said something, do not know.
No, policy, we have a policy meeting. Policy is next Tuesday, but this is our next budget workshop. And between now and then, I think we all have to look at this and formulate our questions and try our best to send them to the board.
Send them to us. We already have a number of things that we're going to look into with things that were discussed tonight.
And copy.
Everyone.
Yes.
Everyone will get that.
After locating a question.
Right, right. If there's nothing else from the board, we'll move to public comments on the agenda. Any public comments on the agenda? Hearing none, call for motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. We'll adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.